One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Karen, non roll call please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next we have our presentation for the general fund revenue and expense review.
Okay. All right. So what I'm going to do is report the results of a financial project that I've been working on for the past three or four months. Last November, in the, I think everybody knows with the audit, we had a very large surprise that irritated many residents as well as those residents sitting up here on the dais. Things that we weren't happy about, and namely it was that the general fund balance dropped from 1.2 million to $583,000. So that was a $659,000 drop, which was much larger than we expected. So for those of you who aren't familiar with the general fund, the general fund is essentially the city's checking account. So it's where all of our, or most all of our revenue goes, and it's where most all of our expenses come out of.
I can't hear very well with the talking and hallway.
Is there an officer in the hallway?
Yeah, there is an officer there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so, you know, just like your own, you know, personal accounts, you know, you want to keep as high balance in there as you possibly can. And ideally for a municipality, you want about 20% of your overall budget as a balance in the general fund. And so when we had that $659,000 drop, you know, drop in the last fiscal year, that actually brought us down to 11%, which obviously is not ideal. So originally, when we passed the fiscal year 23 budget, we expected to take $172,000 out of the general fund. So we knew that our expenses were going to be a little bit higher than our revenue, but in order to preserve services, we made the decision to take out that $172,000, which would have kept us about at 20%, which was, which again is ideal. Six months later in January, when we amended the budget, we upped that number to 234,000. And then at the end of June, we updated it to 251,000 at the end of the fiscal year. Three months later, we had the audit, and it was 659,000, which I think at the time, I referred to as a gut punch, which it essentially was because, sorry, my microphone's stuck, because we weren't expecting that. So the mayor tasked me to figure out what happened and why, and what we could do about it. So over the last several months, you know, I've dug into the financial reports, reviewed the audit, and held a lot of interviews with the auditors, the treasurer, the city administrator, department heads, and various staff members. And essentially, the cause of the $400,000 delta that we weren't expecting was unrecorded transfers from, or related to the road bond fund. So as most of you know, we voted in a millage for a three-year road program, road improvement program. And every winter, we put out to bid for that project. And as part of that bid, what we would do is include other non-road millage projects in that bid. And we did that in order to get a discount. So we get a big discount because we have a large road project. And I can't read in this thing, sorry. Sorry, Tyler. So we did that to, to get, take advantage of a discount. So we get a big discount for that project, for the road project, so we piggybacked other projects as part of it. So things like the DPW parking lot. So that was something that we would pay out of the general fund, and we would have to reimburse the road fund for that. But what happened was the, those reimbursements, or those transfers, never happened back, and that's what was identified in the audit. So there were a lot of things like that, the DPW parking lot, the Santa Barbara paving project, Eldorado, and the Cambridge special assessments. And there's a complete list in Appendix A of the, of the report if you want to see all the different things. But the city administrator, who is the director of finance of the city, never informed the treasury that those transfers had to occur. So for three years, those transfers didn't take place. And that, those projects totaled $420,000, which is almost the exact delta of the surprise that we had with the audit. So we got dinged in the audit pretty bad for that, deservedly. And that's the reason why you have an independent audit, so that, you know, oversights and irregularities and mistakes are caught. And we, you know, it was unfortunate because, you know, as a council, for that entire fiscal year 23, we were not working with accurate financial data all the time, not knowing that there was a $420,000 hit that we were going to incur. The new city administrator is working with Plant Brand to put processes in place in order to ensure that we do get timely and accurate data moving forward, so hopefully that, something like that will never happen again. But, you know, as, and you're one step ahead of me.
Yeah.
So, so as the next step, what I did is I wanted to get a sense of what the general fund would look like if we hadn't done any of the infrastructure projects. So the first thing that I did here is on the table that Mike is pulling up. I started out with the total revenue and the total expense for the fiscal year, and then began deducting all of the revenue and expense related to these infrastructure projects. So the first thing I did was deduct out the sidewalk revenue and the sidewalk expense. Did the same thing with culverts, did the same thing with the Cambridge project, the Santa Barbara project, and the DPW parking lot. And when you deduct out all of the infrastructure and then compare the revenue to expense, we actually grew the general fund by $64,000. So what that tells us is that for the majority of our expenses, they were aligned with our revenue, which obviously is a good thing, which is what we want. But the one caveat I will make about this, and I made this in the earlier meeting as well. The, you know, some, most of these infrastructure projects are reimbursable projects. And by reimbursable, I mean that the residents are paying us back for those projects. We fronted the money. But there are a couple of projects that were listed in there that I took out initially, the DPW parking lot and the Santa Barbara paving. Those projects are projects that we as council approved, and we were planning on paying for out of the general fund. So I think it was a little bit of an overstretch to take those out. So if you put those back in, it was $157,000 of expense. And in that case, if you look at it from that perspective, we were actually $93,000 over, or, I'm sorry, we rephrase that differently. Now, we took $93,000 out of the, out of the general fund in that fiscal year. But either way you look at it, we're pretty close to what we budgeted. So, you know, the budget is our best estimate, and we came within 2% of our budget. And the, you know, the expenses are generally aligned with our revenue for those non-infrastructural expenses, which is basically mostly everything that we do is to operate the city. But, you know, from an absolute basis or taking a myopic view, we did lose $659,000 out of the general fund in the fiscal year. So what I wanted to do next was then get a sense of, get a sense of what effect these reimbursable construction projects that we did had on the general fund. So again, those are things like the sidewalk program, the ditch and culvert repairs that some residents were required to do, and then the Cambridge and the Eldorado special assessments that we did on those particular streets. So those were projects that we funded, but the residents are reimbursing the city for. So with respect to these reimbursable expenses, the infrastructure expenses, they're problematic. One, because they're reimbursable expenses, and second, and most importantly, because the expense isn't always aligned with the revenue. So in other words, the expense occurs in one fiscal year, the repayment, or we get the revenue, happens in a subsequent fiscal year, or even fiscal years. So what I did in the next table, oh, you're one step ahead of me again, thanks. So what I did in the next table was began to look at each of these reimbursable infrastructure projects. And you can see how much we spent and how much revenue we got as a city for all three years of the three-year project. And if you look at the total on the far right-hand side, the expense for sidewalks is 1.1 million. But the revenue that we received as of the date that I ran this report was only 541,000. So if you look at the difference on the far right, that's telling you that we still have $601,000 of sidewalk revenue that's left to be collected from the residents. Similarly, if you look at the ditch and culverts, there's $54,000, almost $55,000 that's left to be collected from the residents. And then looking at Cambridge and Eldorado, that's another $14,000 and $10,000 respectively. So if you add that all up, there's still $680,000 that's left to come in in terms of revenue. And, you know, ideally, that revenue would all come in this year, and essentially, that's, oh, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, so again, it's $680,000 of outstanding revenue. So if you look at the, this year's budget, the fiscal '24 budget, we only estimated that there was going to be $300,000 coming in. So it was $250,000 for sidewalks and $50,000 for culverts, when there's $680,000, as I said, outstanding. So what that's telling us is that there's another $380,000 of revenue that's not accounted for in the current budget. And the current budget shows that we're going to grow the general fund this year by 225,000. So if you add the 308 to the 225,000, you're talking $605,000 of revenue that could come in this year. And I say it that way, that it could come in this year, because ideally, we'd love for it all to come in this year. And you can see the 605,000 almost completely makes up for the 659,000 that we took out of the general fund this past year. But the one thing, or one caveat, or the two caveats that I want to make is some residents took advantage of the payment plan for the sidewalks. So they're paying it back over multiple years. So we're not going to get all that money in this year. Some of it's going to come in this year, fiscal year '24, some of it's going to come in next year in fiscal year '25. Similarly, later on tonight, we're going to be adding, we've got about $100,000 of overdue sidewalk payments from residents that will get added to the tax rolls. Those residents will be paying those taxes in August, which again is in fiscal year '25. So it's not all going to come in this year, but the key point is, we've got 600, what did I say, $608,000 that's still coming in. So the issue of having the big hit this year is because we fronted the money that we're going to get back. Okay, so, and again, that shouldn't come as a surprise to people who follow the council meetings, because we've talked about this concept both with respect to the Eldorado special assessment and the Cambridge special assessment in terms of we were fronting the money, and then those residents will reimburse the city. And then also, in the recommendation that was approved by council for the capital improvement bond, we also talked about the same thing with respect to sidewalks. And in fact, we actually put a small amount of money in that bond to kind of seed the sidewalk program. So, so again, the major point is that our expenses are aligned with revenue, and that the general fund will be, over the next couple of years, you know, all things being equal, will grow back to the 1.2 million that it was, you know, in the last fiscal year. Now, as part of this project, initially, I was at DEFCON 1, you know, with this particular project, because, you know, we thought, you know, we weren't exactly sure what was going on. And, you know, the knee-jerk reaction is, you know, we've got to cut our expenses and we've got to increase our revenue. So having what I just discussed, you know, it wasn't quite as big of an issue, but it's still important to analyze our expenses and look for ways to increase our revenue, especially given the priorities and the needs of the city, all of which cost more money, as we know. So again, there was a series of detailed interviews that took place by department, and we looked at all of the expenses and all of the revenue at the line item level. Nothing was off limits, and the goal was to determine potential ways to decrease our expenses and to increase, you know, our revenue. So an objective, comprehensive list, you know, was generated, and that's in the report. Now, the one thing I want to say is before the residents, you know, storm the castle with their pitchforks and torches, the thing to understand is these are all ideas to be discussed by the administration and council, and there'll be plenty of time for input. You know, as I noted in the detail of the report, some of these items are unlikely to happen, but they do warrant an objective discussion. And so the intent was to be objective in this list and look at all items that could potentially, you know, save money for the city. I'm not going to go through the items individually, because we would be here until 10 o'clock, and I'm already running a bit long. But I do want to talk about some major categories. So looking at the, on the revenue side first, one area that we need to focus on is fees. So there are a lot of our fees that we charge, so things like business license fees, community room fees, police fees, water department fees, building department fees, and so on, haven't been assessed or looked at in many years. In fact, some of them have been the same for over a decade. So some, so those need to be, those need to be looked at, and there's a lot of examples in the detail of the write-up. Collections is another area. So money owed to the city is not always regularly or proactively collected. So these are things like past due balances, you know, water bills, back taxes, fines, fees, things like that. Another area is grants. You know, through, you know, all the things that happened with the federal government via COVID, you know, the federal government is flush with money that they're giving out in grants. We need to be more proactive about going after those grants. Another area that was kind of a common theme was property. The city does have a lot of unused property, and we should investigate whether or not we can sell that property, vacate the property, or license it out. And then similarly, the city also needs to look at some of our unused assets. So the example I gave earlier was, you know, we used to have a gym down here that we don't have anymore. There's exercise equipment that's just sitting there gathering dust that has value. And then the last thing is potential tax revenue. You know, our auditors for the last several years, and I think it may have been the entire time that I've been on council, have been urging us to do a Headley override again, which we did, I don't know how it was.
2010.
2010.
2010, yeah. You know, given our city's stagnated revenue due to things like Headley, Proposition A, the fact that we're a built-out city, and that we haven't recovered from the 2008 real estate market crash, that might be something to consider. So we've had casual conversations about that on council and with the administration, but I think we need to have a more serious discussion about that and determine whether or not, you know, that's something we need to put in front of the voters. And then with respect to expenses, most of the opportunity with respect to expenses is really in our contracts, where we have a lot of large amounts of money going to various vendors for different things. So, you know, examples of that, you know, for the DPW, many years ago, the DPW was outsourced. You know, there may be opportunity for bringing that back in-house, which would be nice, not only because we'd have more control over it, but if we can save money by doing that, you know, again, that's something that needs to be analyzed and looked at further. The other example that I put in here was the police department. You know, the police department uses $2.6 million of our general fund budget, so that's over 50% of our budget. And, you know, while it wouldn't be popular, and I don't think anybody in this room desires to have an outsourced police department, I think one of our strengths is our community policing. If we're being objective, the question has to be asked, you know, is there a potential, you know, savings that might justify that? If it came back with, you know, we could save a million and a half dollars by having an outsourced police department, then we would probably need to have a discussion. But again, if we're being objective, the question has to be asked and analyzed, and then we can go from there. There are a lot of other things that were identified across departments. Again, I'm not going to get into them. You can, you can look at the full report. I know it's long, but there were a lot of suggestions that we came up with. And so the next steps, you know, will be for us to work with the administration to flush out these ideas to the next level and get into a little bit more detail what some of these things would mean and whether or not they are even feasible. And then bring those to council for discussion, where, you know, council can have a discussion, or we can get input from residents, and then we can make, you know, cogent decisions based on the information.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a public comment for items that's on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. You just have to say your name. It's not a conversation of going back and forth. It's just for you to give your comment. If you do have a question, the mayor or the city council member can address it when it's time for mayor and council comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak? You want to come to the podium?
Karen Miller, 1-875-5-GLENWOOD-BULLIVARD. I want to talk about the disbursements. If you go to page 53 and 54, we paid $45 to Integrity Business Solutions for new council nameplates. We also paid Zip Printing $663 for new council nameplates. We also paid Zip Printing $1,340 for new council nameplates. So that's $2,048 for new council nameplates. We had two new council members. Do those look like $2,048? Also then, if you go to page 54, there was $487.14 spent for an employee holiday luncheon. That's an illegal use of taxpayer dollars. According to MML, neither the Michigan Constitution nor state law grants to municipalities the power to spend public money on employee parties, gifts, et cetera. Simply put, a municipality cannot give public funds away. So I hope that you take a look at that. And then also, Mr. Cantor's talking about the general fund. Yes, our revenue and expenditures will match because our budget has to be balanced. But I want to know, where are the numbers for the fund balance? That's what has been depleted and is below, I believe, about 7%, when we're supposed to be around 20, so.
Is there anyone, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? No one else? Okay, so I'm going to adjourn the city council. I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. The city council will open up as the ZBA.
Second.
It's been moved in second, so we'll adjourn for the city council and then rejoin for the ZBA, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the zoning board of, to, and a panel of zoning board of appeals.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Second, and we need roll call.
Board member Garrett?
Here.
Board member Barksdale?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Yeah.
Here.
Board member Cantor?
You're not moving.
Don't write and listen at the same time. Is it on me now?
Yes.
Or Jason? Yes. Or here?
Board chair, you have a case.
Yeah.
Thank you. First up is the ZBA public hearing for 29801 Southfield Road, Papa's Pizza. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Peach. I'm Giffles Webster, the city's planning consultant. First item for consideration under the zoning board of appeals is 28901 Southfield Road. This is an application for a variance request to exceed the 10% sign allowance for a commercial property. The applicant is here to answer any questions the ZBA might have. This was an application that was received after the fact, so after the signage was posted on the site. And I believe all the statements are listed in your packet that the applicant is here to discuss. Again, the variance request is for 90% coverage of the facade at the Papa's Pizza at 28901 Southfield Road.
Thank you.
Hello. Micah Buna.
Pardon me?
Just stating my name. How are you guys?
Oh, you didn't state your name.
It's Micah Buna.
And Robert Pizzielli, on behalf of Papa's Pizza. Do you need my address?
No.
Okay. So, yes, we're seeking a signed variance for that location. And anyone who is familiar with commercial construction, you're behind even before you start. And so there was this emergency on ownership to get the signage up, and we apologize for that, and we are trying to correct that here tonight. But one of the reasons that we wanted to seek the variance is there's limited visibility because of the Southfield Road. The speed in which the cars pass by gives drivers very little opportunity to see what's there. The signage would allow them to see, you know, the pizza that we offer and the limited parking that's in the parking lot. Also, will, the signage will allow those people in the parking lot to see. Also, it does, there is a safety and security issue. There's an office right at the front of the building, was the only place that it could be located, and it has the windows there. So the signage that would cover those windows would cover the office in the front. And as you know, pizza is a very cash-heavy industry, so there's going to be cash counted in that area, drawers exchanged, and shift changes. So it becomes a safety and security matter for the staff and management there. Also, the one final point, by having the additional window coverage, because of the equipment in the pizza restaurant creates a lot of heat, the coverage would eliminate some of the sun coming in, which would allow us to reduce our need for AC and help the environment. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
And this is the current, the signage is what it's currently, right?
Yes, mayor, that is correct. And I believe the office area that he was referring to is actually on the, it is the middle panel. Yes, thank you, that middle panel.
Okay. And what's to the right of it?
That partially obstructs, that partially covers the office, and then there's a small, a small storage area there, right?
Yeah, that says, just dry storage after that.
Was the plan for?
My recommendation before, before you start questioning the applicant is to open the public hearing, conduct the public hearing, and then maybe based on some of the input from the public, you may have additional questions. Yeah, that's why we're silent.
Public hearing is open if anybody wants to be heard regarding signage.
Karen Miller, 1-875-5-GLENWOOD-BULLIVARD. I was just wondering where the Giffles Webster analysis is. I was on planning commission for five years and on council for two years, and I've never seen one of these requests where there wasn't an analysis done by Giffles Webster, telling us the impact and that kind of thing. Because when they talk about the speed and people not being able to see, that pretty much is all of our businesses on Southfield Road. So I think we need to consider that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, closing the public hearing, and so now for the consideration to approve or deny the variance, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance application for 29801 Southfield Road.
Is there a second? It just needs to be a second to move it along.
I'll make a second. I'll do a second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, so to Ms. Miller's point, question is, was there an application presented to the planning commission for a site land review for this property?
No, there was no site plan submitted for this, for this particular property. It wa, it should have been. It was a change, it was a change of use from retail to takeout. Not entirely sure how that got overlooked or missed that process, but it did not go before the planning commission or receive administrative site approval.
Okay. I did a little bit of research and looked at another pizza business that's on Southfield Road, Domino's, just north of you guys. I'm sure they have heat problems, just like you anticipate you'll have. They have awnings. Did you consider installing awnings?
Did we consider, you said, or did we consider?
Have, instead of putting signs on the glass in order to reduce temperatures in the building, did you consider putting up awnings to help reduce temperatures inside the building?
I believe that's a restriction that the landlord has in trying to keep the continuity for the facade of the building.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, I guess while I'm sympathetic to the cause, the problem that I'm having with this is, you know, the, in order for us to approve a variance, there has to be a hardship, and the hardship can't be caused by the applicant. be a hardship, and the hardship can't be, can't be caused by the applicant. And, you know, it, it, I mean, it, to me, the hardship is caused by the applicant by the way it was, it was designed. It seems like there are other alternatives that, that could take place, like, you know, there could be a screen, you know, you could put a screen up, you know, like a, you know, like you have in a cubicle office, you could put a screen up to screen it. The problem, the problem is, is we have the ordinance in place so that, you know, it, so the city doesn't look like a billboard. And while I love your pizza and I've been there, I, I, I just, I have a hard problem with this. One, just because it, it, it does violate the ordinance, obviously, which is why you're here, but, but the hardship, to me, doesn't seem to be there based on the legal standard for approving the variance. So that's my opinion.
And just to make sure we, everyone's on the same page, is that the practical, practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship is where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship in the way of carrying out the strict letter of this chapter. The board may, in passing upon appeals, vary or modify its rules or provisions relating to the construction or structural change in equipment or alteration of building or structure or the use of land, building or structure, so that the spirit of this, this chapter shall be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done, meaning as. There's something that the, the building or presents a hardship, so I'm just reading exactly what was coming from the chapter. And, go ahead.
I was gonna say, something unique about the building that, that creates the hardship as opposed to, you know, the, the fact that the, it was built with the, with the office right by the window. That, that's, that's a, that's a applicant-created hardship which legally makes it difficult for us to approve of this.
And then I'm concerned about not having a site plan, because if we had a site plan, wouldn't that be right, that we would have known what these hardships were, they would have known about the hardships prior to?
In all likelihood, yes. I mean, signage is not generally something that is approved by the planning commissioner necessarily reviewed by the planning commission. You know, the, the most recent example we have of planning commission reviewing signage is related to the Panera planned unit development, but that was somewhat unique, right? Because it was part of that overall PUD application. However, I mean, the planning commission is a very thorough body. They likely would have brought up, you know, plans for signage and addressing some of those, some of those concerns that have been brought up this evening.
And we just, we don't know why there was not a site plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just last week in the planning commission meeting, we had a applicant with an issue that was non-compliant with the zoning ordinance, and we worked with the applicant live in that meeting to come up with alternatives, which they were amenable to, so having that discussion. In a planning commission meeting, reviewing actual plans, which you have actual plans in the application here for the appeal of what the signage was supposed to look like. So there was some work done on that, and it could have been reviewed by the planning commission to potentially come up with an alternative. It's not guaranteed that we would have come up with an alternative, but.
And I will say, the, the larger wall sign, the Papa's Pizza sign, that was reviewed and applied for appropriately. And on that signage package, you know, none of the wall, none of the window signage was included in that application either. So that would have been another avenue for, for us to kind of catch the overage of signage.
Okay, thank you.
So if this appeal is denied, they'll just be required to take down the signage?
They can have a maximum ten percent of the coverage of the window, of the all, total window space can be, can be signage.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but a statement. Actually, no, good, sorry.
Okay.
If I may make one last comment. It was interesting, councilman, that you mentioned the Domino's, because I drove by that same building, and I went by several other buildings on that side of the road, and the liquor store in that same plaza has quite a bit of signage on the windows there. Domino's has coverage. I don't know what self-imposed or, you know, hardships that these other businesses have that would allow for that, but then the kebab restaurant and also an insurance agency. And I know getting out of my vehicle and actually viewing those, those are lobby areas or dining room areas. And in the instance of the insurance, it's just the greeting reception area, so.
Yeah, those are all against ordinance as well. And actually, I had, I was gonna make some comments about that after we, we dealt with this issue, but, but it's a co- I'm sorry.
Will you write, will you make sure that our code enforcer goes down to these other businesses to make sure that they're within the right range? Thank you.
How did this come about? Did someone, did they get cited, or?
That's a new business. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Board member Barksdale?
This is my vote, right?
Right, so the motion is, the motion is to approve it.
Okay. No.
Board member Hammond?
No.
Board member Cantor?
No.
Board member Garrett?
No.
Motion denied.
I'll make a motion to deny the, the variance request for the window signage.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Cantor?
Yes.
Board member Garrett?
Yes.
Board member Barksdale?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yeah, so before we move on, I just, just wanted to, you know, say I agree with his, his point there, and that's something that has been brought up on, on repeated occasion. You know, he's right, you know, Domino's has two full windows blocked, Vintage Village has three, Step-by-Step, Rehab has, has four. I know I personally, when they moved in, brought that up on several occasions, and, and we just haven't enforced that as a, as a, as a code. And so I think, and I, I should say, I've heard in the past from, from, from our code enforcers, you know, statements like, well, we've never enforced that in the past, but that's no reason why we shouldn't be enforcing the code. And I think it, it propagates this whole issue where you have a new, a, a new business moves in and sees what all, all the businesses right next door are doing, so they do the exact same thing. And so if we don't apply the ordinance, we're just gonna run into this over and over and over again. So, so.
It is worth investigating if there had been any approved variances for any of those businesses that are in violation of the ordinance as well, just to make sure that we didn't miss that step. And just looking at Google Maps image of Domino's, which might be really, really old, but those windows are not covered. So at some point, when this business was opened, it was not in violation of the ordinance. And so goes to your point that changes happen, businesses put new stuff up, and you need to be reminded that the ordinance says this, and then enforce that ordinance. That's why we have a code enforcement officer.
Okay, I take a motion to adjourn the ZBA.
Motion to adjourn the ZBA and reconvene the city council?
Second.
It's been moved in second, roll call, please.
Board member Cantor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Now we're at the consent agenda. These are items that are non-controversial and routine and will be the approval of minutes for study session January twenty-second and regular meeting January twenty-second, police department monthly reports, fire department monthly reports, building department reports, dispersment reports, requests to receive and file DDA annual reports, requests to receive and file planning commission annual reports. Who would like to make a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have a public hearing for the special assessments, roll number twenty-two-four-oh-one for twenty-two, twenty-three delinquent sidewalks and delinquent ditch and culverts. If anybody wants to be heard during this public hearing, you're gonna come to the microphone and give your name.
Yeah.
Yeah, ditch and culvert, yeah.
Karen Miller, one-eight-seven-five-five Glenwood Boulevard. I'm just wondering why there's not a public hearing on the delinquent water charges. December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, you approved a list with three-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand forty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents owed in delinquent water charges. And there was supposed to be a hearing held in January, that did not happen, and I'm not, I'm just wondering why that's not on the list tonight, and what are we doing about all of that money?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary McKinney, and I have, well, I'm on Cambridge Boulevard, and I have a question regarding the sidewalk. Why is it that I have to pay for a sidewalk where a tree was planted and it's pulling up the roots, the roots are pulling the sidewalk up, and you're making me pay for it? That was my question.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Lawrence Palmer, one-seven-three-eight-one Redwood Avenue. I have a question about the whole process. I don't understand why my sidewalk was replaced without advance notice. I don't understand why I wasn't given any option, any other option of replacing it by my own effort, hiring a contractor on my own. And in, in my estimation, there's no difference between the sidewalk that was replaced and the existing sidewalk. To me, it was replaced without cause, and I just have a problem with that, and that's why I'm delinquent with my payment. I wanted it in some way to address it. If there's no answer to it that will provide me any relief from it, then I'll make the payment. But I just wanted to have, have a chance to voice my opinion before I made the payment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, council. My name is Derek Cheatham, senior, address is one-seven-three-nine-four San Rosa Boulevard. My concern in regards to the sidewalk is I have an old tree, been there about four years, it's completely dead, has not been removed. I've made attempts to have it removed, and in regards to the sidewalk, the tree is causing two or three of the square pavers to raise. And there was no repair done in front of my house regarding the sidewalk. So if any repair or replacement or anything was done with the sidewalk, I would not have any issue or concern with paying the fee, but no work was actually done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Herschel Clemmons, I'm at two-eight-two-two-five Golden Gate Drive East. Concerning the ditches, they came along and did some work on the cupboard, and where the dozer came in and dug up the ditches, they dug the ditch deeper, the water doesn't go to the drain. And I find that in my area and other areas. So I think you need to look at the contractor and get him back to make the ditches so the water can drain away from, down to the drain area. And also, I'm also concerned about the sidewalk, because as they've already mentioned, the trees is causing the problem. We didn't plant the trees, but you make us responsible for the trees. If we cut them down, you're gonna charge us. So we're in a catch-22, because it's causing a problem, it's always gonna cause that same problem, say, ten years from now. So we're gonna have the same issue, sidewalk being upgraded. So I think something else need to be done, steady on that, and maybe city move the trees. We don't have any other public sidewalks.
Thank you. Is anyone else that wants to be heard? Close the public hearing, and we'll go into the extra requests. First one is the special assessments, roll number twenty-two-four-oh-one for the twenty-two-two, twenty-three delinquent sidewalk and delinquent ditch and culvert. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special assessment, roll number twenty-two-four-dash-oh-one for twenty-two-two, twenty-three delinquent sidewalk and delinquent ditch and culvert.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
There's a good point about consideration about the future impact of trees in the neighborhood, but that doesn't affect the current existing situation of the sidewalks. To my understanding, the engineering firm did assessments of all the sidewalks in the city, made a report, notices were left in people's doors and in mailboxes, public hearings were held by the city council. It seems to me that there was lots of opportunity to have input to the process leading up to the actual execution of the project.
Yeah, multiple, multiple letters were sent out. There was a best face, best, what's the word I'm looking for, best? Best faith, best, best, yeah, best faith estimate was, was, I think it was sent out, and then the, the actual letter was sent out. And in that letter, I think it was Mr. Palmer, who mentioned that, in that letter, residents were given the option to hire their own contractor or to do the work themselves, but there was a date, I, I think they had two weeks to notify the city that they were gonna do the work themselves, otherwise this, this, the city was going to have their contractor, contractor do it. So there, there was that option given. Yeah, and then as far as the, the, you know, the, the trees go, yeah, the city was designed poorly with respect to sidewalks and trees, and we're all paying for it. You know, it's, when Mr., Mr., first Clemmons, Mr. Clemmons, I think, said, said it's catch-22, it totally is, because we're responsible as residents for, for the sidewalks, yet it's a city tree that's causing the problem. One of the things that we did do in the sidewalk program to help, you know, I guess alleviate the cost somewhat, was the, the root grinding that was done for, for those, those areas when they replaced the, the blocks to grind the roots down so that they lay, lay flat and that there's less of a chance for the sidewalk to get upheaved again, is the city picked up the cost of the root grinding. So there was that, and it's, it's not paying for the whole block, but it was, at least it was something, so. And then also to Ms. Miller's comment, did we, did, did we have the public hearing? Because I know, I know we, we had to do it separately.
No, we didn't. I, I went through and I looked, it was not done, it was not noticed. It was originally scheduled, it was, the first resolution set that public hearing date for January twenty-second, and then when, when this public hearing was reset for the twenty-sixth, there was the sidewalk, I'm sorry, not the sidewalk, but the water and back taxes nuisance cuts was not included in that. So that, that needs to be noticed, and a public hearing needs to be held in order to move that resolution forward as well, because, because Ms. Miller's right, those, those are significant costs. And though, that roll gets forwarded, so we get reimbursed for that from the county, so.
Any other questions?
Just one, one last comment. So we are discussing about impaneling a tree committee, and so that won't solve the problem with trees that are currently planted, but maybe it'll create a pathway to avoid the, this with future trees that are planted in the city in the future.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have a request to approve a special land use request for two-seven-four-one-one Southfield Road, Jay Bird's Bar and Grill.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we have the final step in consideration of a special land use request that was submitted by Jay Brown for Jay Bird's Bar and Grill, which is hopefully going to be located right across the street at two-seven-four-one-one Southfield Road. This, this item was heard by the planning commission at their meeting last, last Tuesday. It did have, it did obtain administrative site plan approval, because it, it did have an approved site plan on file. It should be, I do want to note, though, that it is considered to be, the parking is considered to be an existing non-conformity with the site. Our original, when doing the administrative review, we determined that for some reason, the parking. the parking requirements that were previously in place when the site plan was originally approved were not applied accurately. So this was something that was discussed by the planning commission. They are aware, as is the applicant, that there is, there may be a parking issue. And if those, it becomes a real issue in terms of parking on side streets and in other locations that they will need to pursue some shared parking agreements and/or install additional parking at their expense in the right of way, which the planning commission and council have approved those standards. But ultimately, this is a new use, a reuse of that building, which has been a restaurant since its construction many years ago. The applicant is here to answer any questions, but he would be serving traditional fare and alcoholic libations to those that may be interested. This request is for the special land use consideration, which is for the sale of alcohol. Also, one thing that was discussed in the planning commission was the hours of operation. Mr. Brown has originally proposed, in the planning commission, to have hours extending past eleven P M. This was brought to his attention that it is outside the city's ordinance. Should he wish to extend those hours past eleven P M., he will have to seek a variance before the zoning board of appeals. He is aware of that, and I believe at this time, he's just kind of going to hold off, right? But Mr. Brown, if you'd like to come on up and tell the mayor, council, and residents here a little bit about what you're proposing, that would be wonderful.
Hello, Ms. Mayor and council, and members. I'm Jay Brown. So if you guys have any questions, really, she kind of said it all. So basically, a restaurant with a bar, we're having liquor license, I'm transferring. When she was saying the variance, it's just really the weekend, maybe Friday or Saturday, something like that, go to twelve. Because a lot of, this is my second location, so a lot of my customers are like people like us. So you don't have curfews. So you might want to stay after twelve o'clock, you know, so, and that's pretty much it. You know, we're not doing it to, we don't do the young crowd, so you don't have to worry about later being, you know, a bunch of stuff coming through. We don't do that.
Thank you. So let me make sure I get this right, that we're doing, we're doing hours and?
No.
Well, no, actually, so, and because this is a special land use, the council has the ability, it's a resolution that council passes that allows for them to operate within these conditions. So you have the ability to add conditions onto it. For example, you could create a condition that there's no parking on the side streets of any patrons. So if patrons park on the side street, that becomes a basis that you could revoke his special land use permit, his ability to operate that business. On this site previously, same mechanism was applied for Salvatore Scalopini. And as part of that, they had requested and council had given them, they had given them the operability, excuse me. The hours of operation for the business during which it may be open to the public shall be Monday through Saturday, nine A M. to eleven P M. And Sunday from twelve P M. to ten P M. So they were able to operate outside those normal, those normal hours of operation. So again, it's something that I think you have that ability to do through the special land use resolution. You could make them go to the C B A, but if, again, this is what we kind of talked about in the study session. You're the same body making the same decision. So if you're telling him he can't include it as part of his special land use permit, then he's coming back before the same body asking for permission under the zoning board of appeals. So we try to avoid that conflict if possible, but that is, that is something that.
You mentioned that Salvatore Scalopini had approval to operate Monday through Friday from nine to eleven?
Nine to eleven, and then.
And Sunday and Saturday from twelve to ten?
Yeah, from.
Or was that Sunday?
Sunday.
What about Saturday?
Can I say something?
Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday from noon to ten P M.
Okay, so Monday through Saturday, nine to eleven, Sunday noon to ten.
Correct.
So Salvatore, that was ten years ago. You had Village Grill, you had like, so I've been on Southfield for eighteen years, so I know everything that's been there. So, but I can't do agreement with some of the doctors' offices because they're closed, like certain days, Sundays. Like, you know, Sundays at dinner time, they're closed. So if I do an agreement with them, you know, if I'm that busy, you know, we can park over there, you know. So I don't have no problem with none of that.
Yeah, I mean, asking for that agreement is one thing, getting it is another thing. So there's no guarantees. It's likely, it's likely, but, you know, still. But would you be open to the hours that we had been approved ten years ago for nine A M. to eleven P M.?
For now, yes.
Yeah, you can always come back and request something else. That's, that gives you a little bit of extra leeway, right?
Exactly.
So that was Monday, Monday through?
Saturday.
Saturday, nine to eleven. Are you open in the morning?
No, we're doing lunch. So my last location, we just did, after COVID, we just did dinner. But this time, we're going to do lunch because all the businesses on Southfield and in the area, so.
So what time did you propose to open, eleven?
Yeah.
And Sunday noon or also eleven?
Maybe, maybe eleven still.
You're going to do Bloody Marys as my Sunday brunch?
I'm planning on doing a weekend brunch. So it's going to be a limited menu, so we're going to test it out. You know, we got jacket for it down the street, you know. I don't want to take all their business.
I think that the way that the special land use question go is exactly like the city attorney says, include the hours as they're written up in here now. That's just my opinion.
As written in the request?
Right here. You see them?
Yes.
Pardon me? Is this the right one? I'm looking at item ten A.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I still swear that we stayed, that Village Grill stayed open later. I just, I don't know, we can't find it, but we.
How are you sure you gave them till midnight as part of their special land use?
For the record, we should let them. At eleven A M. to midnight, it's a little bit of grill, then they just told us all of a sudden.
But it was, I know we did these, the hours before for either.
There's been some other, there have been some other ones that have, through the special land use permit, you have given them outside of what the normal ordinance allows for.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I have things to say.
Oh, well, say.
Not a question or anything, but the picture on the, on the first page is not at the right location. So I was confused for a while. Later pictures are in the correct location. I just want, I know it's likely more complicated than I am understanding it to be. But we did just talk about, as far as the parking ordinance goes, we did just deny someone's request and say that it's unfair that other restaurants and businesses, I know we're going to look into it now. And I'm not sure the original reason why the, if I understood this correctly, they would potentially need more parking based off of our current codes. I guess I would just be interested in how the previous location, why they didn't, what they did, I think they applied for a, for a variance. I would just be interested as to their reasoning, though I don't think that it's, I'm still in favor of it, but I'm just intrigued by that.
So the previous entity did not go and obtain a variance for a reduction in parking. It was approved at a low, calculated at a lower minimum.
Okay.
So, which upon review appears to have been, the incorrect parking calculation was, may have been applied to that, to that particular use at that time. Regardless, they were approved for such, and that's what Ms. Steck is explaining, is that because they were approved at that, and the use hasn't changed. It's gone dormant, but it hasn't changed. It's still been utilized as a restaurant. So that approval would carry forward as a legal nonconformity.
Was parking ever an issue for any of the previous tenants?
The most recent one, no, because it was never really open. Previously, I, I mean, there were some issues with it, but I don't recall any issues with it being on the residential side streets or.
Okay.
And again, I think that's something that, it's a reasonable condition to put on there. It's protecting the residents so that you're not in a situation where now you've got a surplus of car. I'll use Vincetta Garage in rural as an example. They approved that restaurant with clearly not enough parking, and then it created a huge issue for the residents that were adjacent to that restaurant. So putting, putting things like that in place that provide a mechanism to reel it in relatively quickly is always a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, site plan review and special land use for two seven four one one Southfield Road, allowing hours of operation Monday through Saturday from nine A M. to midnight, and Sunday from eleven to ten P M. And then I'll also throw on my other standard condition that I throw in everything for daily trash pickup on the premises. And, well, and no, and no street parking.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any further discussion?
I thought we were going based off of, for the hours at least, based off of.
I thought we were, well, that's when you used to say, no.
Oh, right, right, right.
I just wanted to, I didn't know if Bruce misspoke or if he said that on purpose.
No, I was basing it on, we had had a, Scott had indicated we had another vendor there at one point that was to midnight, so.
Well, the one you said till ten P M.
On Sunday.
Yeah, I thought it was eleven.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to eleven P M. on Sunday, I'm sorry. You're right.
Can I allow me to clarify further? So are you going, are you doing the hours based on what a previous applicant had requested or what Mr. Brown is requesting?
Well, Mr. Brown was requesting till one A M.
Only for Saturday.
Only Saturday.
Only for Saturday, and then Wednesday through Friday from eleven A M. to twelve A M.
Mondays to eleven P M.
Yep. Correct.
Okay.
And then Sunday from eleven to eleven.
Right.
Yeah, I'll stick with my motion. If somebody wants to revote it down, we'll, we'll change it.
What was the hours again?
He said nine A M. to midnight.
And eleven to, eleven to ten on Sunday. Eleven to eleven on Sunday, sorry.
So there's no one A M. Basically, there's no one A M.
It won't be a noise ordinance, we'll be inside.
There's, so one second, so there's no, there's no one A M. I just want to make sure that we, okay. All right, there's motion, anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale?
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is to request to confirm the finance director appointment. You're up, Mike Island.
Thank you, mayor. So as you guys know, our previous city treasurer finance individual left the city at the end of December. So over the past couple of months, I have posted that application, or posted the job posting, interviewed a couple of folks. I believe we found a very qualified candidate that can fit Letherton Village very well. Michelle Townsend is who I'm recommending council approve as finance director and city treasurer does me. And if approved tonight, she expects to start mid-March. And also with my recommendation, I did include salary and estimated benefits based off my conversations with her. And my also recommendation would be to change the split of how this employee is charged. Currently, the city has charged this employee general fund ninety percent, D D A ten percent. I'm recommending that we add some water and sewer charges into that. As you guys know, in our budget, about fifty percent of it, of the total budget, is water and sewer related, let alone the amount of time they'll just spend on water, sewer, bank reconciliations alone, plus overseeing our departments that oversee utility billing and things like that. So I feel like this is a fair amount to charge to that, those accounts, but leave that up to you.
Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm Michelle Townsend as finance director.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any additional conversation?
Yeah, I'll just say, I like, I like the fact that you, you added the split for water and sewer because I never understood why, why the, why the, in the past, we weren't allocating any of the costs to water and sewer when probably more than twenty percent of the time, at times, was spent. So I think that's a good thing.
Any further discussions? Harry, now roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the request to approve the D E S electric Lether Village antenna replacement proposal.
So as council knows, we talked about this briefly in the study session. But part of the proposal from Ferguson is to install a tower for water meter reads within the city. The natural location for them is in the middle of the city, which includes city hall and municipal park. So instead of installing a tower within our park, we suggested replacing the old dispatch tower that's right behind our building with this new proposed tower. While that site appears to work right now with Ferguson, one of the issues we run into is we need some additional work outside of that scope, which includes electrical plus removing what's currently on that tower and reinstalling it. So I'm recommending waiving the bid process and going with D E S Electric. D E S Electric is the one that has done a lot of electrical work in the city before, including installing the big generator outside and doing the initial hookup with all of that. So I believe it's just in the best interest of the city of going with a company that knows, knows the layout out there and won't experience any unforeseen costs.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Lether Village antenna replacement quote from D E S.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the city attorney question. I know there's, there's stipulations in terms of when we can waive the competitive bidding. I just want to make sure that, you know, there were, there were good points made in the study session for doing so. I just want to make sure that we're, we're not violating any type of regulation or charter or law doing that, and that this meets the requirements. I know emergency is one of the requirements.
Those would be typically under emergent or if there's a limitation, like, for example, like, I think it was the elevator. There was, you know, there was, the argument was made that they were the only contractor that provided that service. Same thing with Ferguson. They were, they had the patent on the technology. So in those situations, you know, this one, I, honestly, I don't really know if it would fit into one of those criteria for waiving the process. To Mike's point that, you know, it's, it's a relatively minor expenditure, I mean, in terms of what he can approve, can't approve. But I would, I would, I would say that it doesn't fit within one of the emergency exceptions. I could look into it a little bit more, but I, you know, I don't think that this situation would qualify under, under that exemption.
Had to ask the question.
The proposed tower is seventy-five feet tall. What's the current tower?
We just go look, but when I'm at Ferguson, it looks like it's probably about fifty-five, sixty.
But we're not talking about the towers. It's about doing the electrical work at this point.
Thank you.
I'm just saying that that's not the part we're talking about. So are you saying that we should not waive the, the bid process?
I don't think it's a, on something like this, I don't think it, you know, I think you're probably going to end up with the same result at the end of the day. But I think it's in the best interest to open it up and submit it out, maybe a short window, but you've already got one proposal, you'll only need two more.
Did you make the proposal, I mean, did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Would you like to amend it?
I'd like to amend the motion.
Or we can just vote it down.
Easier, sure. I will make a motion to, I will amend my motion to deny the, the Lether Village antenna replacement quote from D E S.
To waive it.
I didn't make a motion to waive the, I did not make a motion to waive the bidding process.
The second.
I think we're going to have to vote it down and just start over.
Yeah, because I don't know what you said.
That's easier, that's easier, just to a roll call.
Okay, it's been moved in second. No more discussion.
Mayor Garrett?
Okay, thank you. No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
No.
Councilmember Barksdale?
No.
Motion denied.
So now I will make a motion.
Or do we table it?
Just table it?
Table it.
Yeah, you don't have to take action on it.
Do we need to move to table it?
There is a motion required to table it.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to table. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to table the decision for approving DES Electric for the Lathrop Village antenna replacement services.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion?
Can I amend my motion, please? I'm sorry. And, and direct the city administrator to put the, to put this out to bid.
Second.
It's moved in second. Moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Motion carried.
So next, we have the request to fill Parks and Recs committee appointments, tree committee appointments and for the DDA.
Yep, so as council knows, over the past month or so, we've been advertising to fill these vacancies. So including your packet are the applications we have received. So we're just looking for who you would like to appoint to these committees. And if anything, my recommendation would be naturally to stagger the committees for each, each board so we don't have a mass exodus all at once.
So do we do that after we do the appointments?
Probably first, yeah, but I can see it doing all at once.
Repeat the question for me. You want to do.
So we do the appointments and then, this is my thoughts. So do the appointments and then once you meet as a committee, then to determine who wants to do what for, I mean, because I agree with the staggered terms.
Well, each body should have, in its bylaws, it should have the staggering of terms for, for members. The committees, like, those are, those are typically annual appointments, though.
Okay.
So they need to be redone every year.
Okay.
Makes it easy.
So, yeah, that, yeah.
That's all that problem.
The only one, the only one I think that out of all of them here that would, would have a staggered term is probably the DDA appointment.
Right, that does. Okay, so it's on me for the first one, right? So the recommendation for, so which one is first?
Recreation.
For recreation.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. It's Nicole, I recommend Nicole Lowry, Christina Schindler, Carol Green and Elaine Mantonan.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Elaine Mantonan to the Parks and Rec Commission Committee.
Second.
Are you doing each person?
Yeah, we've got to do them individually, don't we, typically?
You could, I think, because we have some.
In the past, we have. I'm fine doing it all as a group.
I'm comfortable with you making a motion for each individual committee and appointing the individual.
One, one for the committees, but naming all people.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, I'll amend my motion. I will make a motion to appoint Nicole Lowry, Elaine Mantonan, Christina Schindler, sorry. Sorry, Christina, and Carol Green to the Parks and Rec Commission. Ready?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I would like to make a statement that there were, all the candidates that applied were quality candidates. Everybody was given consideration. I'm confident that we picked a good group of people. Do this, there was a comment made in the study session that the committee could be larger. I'd like the committee to make the decision about how large their committee should be and bring that to the city council for consideration, should they choose to modify the number of people on the committee.
Thank you. Roll call. Is there anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have the request to approve the tree committee appointments. And I would recommend Brian Nguyen, Nancy Perschard, I hope I said your last name right, Roger Lynn and Scott Warner. Anybody like to make a motion? Anybody?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint to the tree committee Brandon Nguyen, Roger Lynn, Nancy Perschard, and Reed Bosky.
Wait a minute. Then I'm looking at something wrong.
No, I did something different than what you recommended.
So you did Lynn Nguyen, Bosky.
And Roger Lynn, Brandon Nguyen, Nancy Perschard and Reed Bosky.
That was your, that's your.
That's my motion.
Okay.
I'd like to second your motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make a statement that the reason I suggested Reed is because of his expertise and background based on his.
You're absolutely, thank you for catching it because it was a mistake.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it was a mistake, so thank you.
Not to say that Scott's not qualified.
I'm not saying that either, but I think that if I'm not mistaken, Reed was a, was he the herbist?
No, that was Brandon.
So there was something else, but thank you.
No, Reed has indicated that he has gone down a path of learning about horticulture, using native plants in his own yard.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's why I suggested him.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next one is request to approve DDA appointments.
Yeah, there's only one applicant in the packet.
I recommend. Thank you. Danielle Huey, Danielle Huey as the, for the DDA.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Danielle Huey to the DDA Board of Directors to serve a four-year term ending on February 1st, 2028.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Were, were we just looking for one person for the?
Yeah, there's only one opening on the DDA.
Okay.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. City Administrator report.
The biggest thing I have today is just want to make sure, as council is aware, but for the public, this is Ms. Calva's last city council meeting for City Lathrop Village. She's moving on to the next phase of her career, so we are now in the midst of a search for a city clerk. So even though I've only known you for two months, thanks so much for everything you've done for the city. I know you're going to do great things. But with that, we'll also have a couple of other transitions within City Hall, replacing some folks as they move on to the next step in their career. So for people that visit City Hall, please be patient with us. We appreciate it a lot. We're going to be going through major transition in City Hall. So we're going to have some turnover. We're going to get some new faces. People are going to be learning the ropes. So please just be patient, just be civil. We're going to do everything to kind of serve the community. But it's going to take some time during this transition, so appreciate it.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Reports of boards, commissions, committees? Nothing. Unfinished new business? Nothing. Public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. You can actually talk about whatever you would like to talk about. If you want to give your name, it is a conversation. It's not a conversation. It is just where you give your comment. And then if the council person or mayor wants to respond, then they will do it during the mayor council comments. Who would like to come to the podium and speak?
None likes to Redwood Avenue. Are we going to set up a budget committee to include residents for the budget that's coming up? I guess it's a rhetorical question, but I recommend we do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Garrett and other individuals. My name is Roger, longtime resident of Lathrop Village for nearly 40 years, my wife and I. We've had two homes in Lathrop. One thing we really like about Lathrop is the diversity of it. All peoples are accepted regardless of your color, regardless of your relationships with your spouse. We're open to, you know, all individuals. This is one of the things that's really important to me and my wife. As I said, we've been here nearly 40 years, which brings me to another issue. When I, on February 5th, when I turned on the Fox News, I saw our mayor being interviewed. And I was really excited because I was thinking, oh, maybe it has something to do with the property just north of here. Making an announcement to the annual Lathrop school system. But no, it was, I was more, after she started talking, I was shocked, I was saddened and I was hurt because she was using the word that our city is a racist city. And it really hit me hard because I don't believe our city is a racist city. If it is, I think we need to do something about it. And I'm looking at our mayor, you need to do something about it if it is. Get, get residents together. Let's have some brainstorming. Get all white people together and let's do something about it rather than going on Channel 2 Fox News and making an announcement like this. The other thing we could do is, have any surveys been sent out to all the residents to ask them what their feelings are? Get their input. Or is this just your feeling? And that's what I'm, I'm real hurt on this whole thing. I think we need to work together to overcome this. And I think that's the mayor's position to do that. We should be promoting our city. When you get the light of a TV channel on, talk about the good things of our city. Talk about our strengths. Talk about our community. Talk about our businesses rather than saying we're a racist community. Thank you.
I'm Barb Canes. I live on Glenwood Boulevard. I'm a lifetime resident and I mean that literally. And I was a two-year council member the last two years. And I'd just like to make a statement to carry on to what Roger said, that now that everyone has had time to digest the magnitude of harm done by the, done to the reputation of Lathrop Village, we can only hope logic and integrity will prevail. We cannot allow individuals to continually tarnish our community, especially those in prominent positions. We are sickened and saddened by this unmerited bashing and it needs to stop. How are we to attract new families and businesses to Lathrop Village, given the hateful and divisive rhetoric spewed by a select few? The sullying of this amazing community is inexcusable and especially egregious because it is unfounded. It is the duty of elected officials to champion, unite and promote the community they serve. For the second time in four months, we have had to endure backlash stemming from negative comments made by an elected official. This is a call to LV City Council, all of you, to reexamine your choice for the face of our community. Our home values, our businesses and community relationships depend on selfless, trustworthy officials. When an elected official exhibits multiple lapses in judgment and character, it becomes a breach of trust and a vote of no confidence. Lathrop Village deserves better.
Someone next? Thank you.
Hi, Lauren Barris, a resident. I'd like to thank council for starting up the committees that we didn't have or bringing back committees. The Parks and Rec, the Tree Committee and the IDA. Every one of them are important to the city and the residents and I appreciate council making this an early priority. I also really appreciate Bruce going through the general fund and explaining that to us. It was, it was really understandable where this is a hard thing to understand. But I also want to thank, because he's present in the room, Mark Watts and his Boys to Men organization for sponsoring the Black History Month discussion panel at City Hall on December, I mean, excuse me, February 15th. There were some heavy hitters from our community on that panel, including representatives from both Oakland County and Wayne County Police Departments. The dialogue was open and frank. I learned a lot and I have to say it touched me really deeply as I become consistently reminded that I don't know what I don't know. After seeing the Fox 2 piece and after personally witnessing the way our mayor Garrett is treated by some of the members of our community, I thought it was super important to attend an open discussion with our community black leaders in hopes of understanding and in hopes that these types of events would bring the community together. Just like Roger Lynn was just saying, having open discussion about this, this is exactly what that event was. I learned so much, but I have to say I was disappointed. I was not disappointed in Mr. Watts, but, and not with the Boys to Men organization. Not with the Boys to Men organization that volunteer for our community and hold many events here. I was not disappointed in them. I was disappointed that besides a few city, city employees and my friend Chuck and me, we were the only white people in the audience. The very people that need to have these types of discussions, that need to open their hearts to understand their neighbors that don't look just like them, we're not there. I'm, I'm actually, I'm not trying to shame anyone because I know people are busy too and traveling and things like that. But I'm really asking point blank our white residents to show their support for our black community and show up to events like this. If you're upset about the behavior of a few people towards a gray group like Boys to Men, then show up and show that support. It's announced on newsletters and on Facebook and I'm sure that the city would give you the information if you called directly. I know there'll be more events like this. I'm proud to live in this diverse community. I'm proud to have the city council staff and DDA. I'm also very proud of Mark Watts. Thank you for being in our community.
Thank you.
Seriously.
Thank you.
Ian Ferguson, Lathrop Village. Roger, you're absolutely correct on that. 90%, 98% of white people that live in Lathrop, I break bread with. They're anti-racist. We commune together. We're in the park together. We talk about business. Most are Republicans, some are Democrats. We talk about business like that. But the 2%, which is roughly eight to 10 people, they're causing all these problems. I want to direct everybody to YouTube where you can see the Lathrop Village council meeting, August 7th, 2023. Fast forward to 1 hour, 49 minutes, 18 seconds. It's a special meeting. There you'll see the person that just spoke about dishonesty and, you know, corruption and all that. Barb Canes tried to enter a photograph of a child into the record without the parents' permission. Also, go to September 25th. Fast forward to 29 minutes and 27 seconds. You'll see the mayor and Barb Canes arguing about that photograph. And the mayor's telling her that she attempted to meet with her to try to resolve the issue, whether by email or whether by in person. So when you talk about negative press, you started this whole thing. You started it on August 7th. The city lawyer basically said that Boys to Men organization is not liable to the city, nor are they paid by the city. It is a partnership between the DDA, Boys to Men. DDA is a special legal entity from the city. So they're not being paid by the city. People have to understand that those children, their parents when they were kids, they're from people who were actually in the civil rights movement. So they belong here. They're residents. You want to partner with them? Okay. We have no problems with that. But don't, please don't come up here and say you had nothing to do with it when you entered this information and you started it. You took a photo from somebody else's house through the mayor's backyard. Now, if Kelly says she has, she's experiencing racism, who am I to question that? If Mark Watts saying that, who am I to question that? But I tell you, I went over to her house and her house was spray painted after she became mayor. None of you guys showed up. Did you show up to say, hey, we're not like that? Instead, you come here and you try to belittle the mayor and anybody else that, that is supporting Boys to Men. They are like godlike people here. They're exhibiting Jesus-like behavior. They're volunteering with the police. They're residents. They don't have criminal records and you're, you're trying to do a quid pro quo politically against the mayor because of this program? You have to be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you.
Where's the leadership?
Who's next? Anyone else?
No one else is going to speak?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Well, I, Carol would go first.
Hi, Carol Green. Our city has an ethics section of its ordinances with the stated purpose of maintaining the public trust and to enhance the faith of the citizens in the integrity and impartiality of the officials of Lathrop Village. It appears to me that there have been many violations of the ethics ordinance which should be addressed. First one is use of the community room at no charge for both a nonprofit organization and an employee's personal use. Use of the community room granted at a discount rate for a political party event also was granted. Use of the community room was granted for fundraising events, which is against the current rental policy for both a nonprofit organization and a political party event. City staff were used during working hours to transport and supervise participants from a local nonprofit organization. City staff also assisted in setting up the community room for a nonprofit organization event that had not paid for room setup services. A group of youth from a local nonprofit organization were sent to provide services at the mayor's home and were later paid by the DDA for their services. It is unknown whether the youth had work permits as required by the Michigan Child Labor Laws. Youth were allowed to drive the city's gator and were also pictured on the DDA website, social media, while they were working in unsafe conditions under the supervision of a city employee. Mayor Garrett has used Fox Two News to express and broadcast her opinions of racism and fear in the city. These incidents caused me to question, where are the checks and balances for these actions? Where is the accountability? As a thirty-seven-year Lathrop Village resident, I'm saddened to say that the above actions, excuse me, are very unsettling. I'm left to wonder what other issues might be occurring that we're unaware of, subsequently causing me to have a lack of trust with our city officials and an eroded faith that they are acting with integrity and impartiality that the ethics ordinance calls for. While our city leadership has been floundering with frequent turnover of city administrators over the past few years, it is my hope that Mike Green will lead the staff and officials in following the ordinances that they have been sworn to uphold. I have nothing against the Boys to Men organization. I think it's a wonderful organization. I think it's necessary.
Oh, time, your time is up.
But the rules are being broken of our city.
Your time is up. Does anyone else that would like to be heard?
Hi, Sue Lynn, resident of Lathrop Village with my husband Roger here for over thirty years. I also was shocked and saddened to hear the news broadcast of our city being racist. I see something so much different. We walk every day, our dog, sometimes other people's dogs, seven miles a day approximately throughout the city. We meet so many residents, all different types of residents, young, old, white, black, gay, straight. And all of them are so kind and nice. There might be a couple of people that maybe I don't get along with, or you don't get along with. But to go ahead and go on television and blanket the community, I was just so saddened. And I would like to see us somehow get out of this. I mean, to bring in new businesses, how's the DDA going to bring in any new businesses if they think we're a racist community when we're not? I go to parties around the neighborhood quite frequently, and it's all types of people. And when you say racist, I'm one of the old ones. So, I mean, they even invite me. I would like to see us fix this. I would like to see us to get together as a council and come up with a way. I mean, look at our city concerts in the park. Look at the walk we had when George Floyd was murdered. We got together as a community, and we all gathered and held hands. That was not racist, that was one. We were one voice, Lathrop Village. I wish Fox News were there that day. So I would like to see us somehow as a group get together and fix this. Good job.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Lori Kudes, Lathrop President. And I too started out with a big my notes are different because everyone is saying the same thing about the news and the story. I also echo that, and I am more than upset that a fake email was read about me, created by a fake chat GPT and referenced an imaginary reference resident that supposedly filed a complaint against me. The whole thing is untrue. My lawyer said, there's no FOIA in that letter, it's a lie, it's a fake email. And as God is my witness, I will testify in court. I did not give anyone the finger. I was so angry that I threw my hands down and I said, I did this. And that is not on the tape, that has been edited also. And I know the tapes are edited. So as the interview went, we were warned that things were heating up and more of a police presence is needed to keep the elected officials safe. While I don't agree with that because ever since the new council came in, aside from tonight, no police presence was warranted. They weren't here because there isn't an issue of racism. It was used as an excuse to throw people like me under the bus for knowing the truth about the businesses. And when I start to FOIA and I find out what's really going on, then I may be called a racist. And it's not true. I never complained about the Boys to Men. I think it's a wonderful program. We were concerned for their safety. There's no policy, there's no insurance, we've asked about it a million times. We didn't post those pictures of the boys. Brittany Dorsey posted them. It is not Barb's fault. She did not post those pictures. And even the city attorney kind of threw Barb under the bus by saying, be careful what you think you saw. She did not post those pictures. She did not. So lastly, I would like to plead, make a plea to the integrity of our city council members. I implore you to listen to your conscience. Do you really think?
Your time is up, thank you.
We should be viewed as racist?
Your time is up. Does anyone else want to speak? Hold up, make sure everyone wants to go first.
Karen Miller, 1-875-5-GLENWOOD-BULLIVARD. I am feeling that perhaps some of these things are deflections from the financial issues in our city. The financial review that we heard about tonight is appalling, not addressing the fund balance that has been going steadily down. And it is a confirmation of fiscally irresponsible decisions made by Garrett, Cantor, Jennings, and Brachi with full support from Attorney Baker. The $659,000 reduction in our general fund shouldn't be a shock to anyone. They recklessly spent our money, as you can see, $2,048 on council nameplates? That's questionable. And are now trying to cover the damage they have caused. Having Cantor, the person most responsible for this mess, do a financial review is like letting the rooster guard the hen house. For three years, I tried to draw attention to rising expenditures and a falling fund balance. I questioned why policies, procedures, processes, and the charter weren't being followed. I asked for financial information so I could make informed decisions. I was chastised, gabbed, disrespected, and forced to file FOIA requests. The thing that is so ironic is that Cantor put some of my ideas in his report. As usual, his numbers are skewed, something that has been a constant since he chaired the Infrastructure Committee. In his review, he refers to alleyway vacations and generating annual tax revenue. He was gifted half of the alleyway next to his home in 2021. He paid nothing, but it was mentioned that the city would receive additional tax revenue. Since then, his taxes have gone up $66.62. Mine have gone up $70.30. The increases were due to across-the-board assessment increases, not because of the alleyway. Our council shouldn't be asking for more money when they haven't properly managed what they have. In my two years on council, there were never any discussions about setting priorities based on resident needs or wants and adjusting our budget accordingly. There was never any discussion about realigning funds or making cuts. Garrett has been on council for twelve years and Cantor for six years. When they took over in 2017, we were in good financial shape. Under their leadership, we now have a mess. It was obvious to me that no one understood budgeting or the fund balance or the need to live within our means. The latest audit is proof. We need an outside, objective analysis, a forensic audit, not done by those that spent the money or by Plant and Moran, who is complicit in this situation.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Thank you.
Unless you were coming, were you coming?
You're good.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Jones. I am not a resident of Lathrop Village, but we do own property in the city. We own the building at 18411 West 12 Mile Road. We are a ministry as well as a nonprofit. And so recognizing that Lathrop does need to heal. We love this city, we don't live here, but we do have a vested interest here. In Prayer Friday, when we were praying, what came to my mind was Daniel 2:20. And that's basically where the Lord is having a conversation with Daniel. And he's saying, blessed be the name of God forever, for wisdom and might are he is. He changes the times and the seasons. He removes kings and he raises kings up. He gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to those who have understanding. He reveals the deep and secret things. He knows what's in the darkness, and light comes from him. So what I would encourage everybody to do, both the community and the leadership, is to band together. You know, the word of God tells us to pray for our leaders because they need our prayers. If we don't agree with them, the Bible never asked us to agree with them. The Bible says, no matter who they are, to pray for them. That's something that we've tried to do. We've tried to pray for the leadership, no matter who they were. So God has set up this present council. The council before this, God set up that council. So I just believe that if we could just band together and like Councilman Barksdale said, be human and decent towards one another, that things would work out. So thank you for letting me come in, not being a resident, knowing that I love you all and I do have an investment in this community. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Adam Laurie, I'm on the organizing committee for the Lathrop Village Music Festival. Just an observation for those who are looking in from the outside, trying to figure out what's going on here in this community. It's really apparent to me as someone who has been involved in Lathrop since 2016, you've got people in this community that are very positive and looking forward and trying to think about the future and what can we do to better ourselves here. And you've got groups of people in this city that are looking in the past and throwing accusations and trying to lay blame and continually litigating the past. This council I see here before me, I know all of you. I know you all have good intentions and that you're looking forward at what can we do to better Lathrop Village. The previous council, which I paid a lot of attention to, was constantly stuck in the mud trying to relitigate the past over and over and over, making accusations without any proof. Clearly, this is a beautiful place. We all love this community. We all want good things here. But you can either choose to move forward or you can choose to be stuck in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Is there anyone else?
I'll speak.
Hello, Autumn Suzanneis, Rainbow Drive. And I am running the Lathrop Village Voice Facebook page where we are doing things like presenting FOIA emails so that you can see that in July, in August, and September, this issue of Boys to Men being in our city without liability have hold harmless, there was no hold harmless contract, there was no actual official partnership. There was checks being written to individuals questioned by Pam Schirmeier on the DDA board. And those names were told to us that they were the Boys to Men crew and they were being paid from the part-time salary. That was news to us because on September 19th, the mayor in the email which we posted on the page says that those were volunteers and they were unpaid. And as unpaid volunteers, they were welcome to work on the mayor's property, do what they will. Thing is, is she knew two days, excuse me, on the September 15th, a few days, four days before she had heard, she had attended a meeting at the DDA where it was made clear that the Michigan Works funding had fallen through and those kids were in fact paid by city taxpayer money. And the thing is, is that's great. I don't mind that people are getting, I mean, we have seven seniors on our Adopt a Senior program we just discovered. That's the list of seniors, how do you get on that senior list? That's something we'd like to know. Why is a fifty-four-year-old woman considered a seat? How is the mayor self-dealing like that? That's a question. Has nothing to do with racism. We combed through emails with FOIA requests, looking for any evidence of harassment or any accusation of racism, any proof that children were followed or photographs were taken. No, those photographs came from the Instagram post that Brittany Dorsey posted herself on Instagram. Proud that these children were perched balanced on the arms of lawn furniture, wearing crocs, without any kind of facial protection. And Barb Canez's email is available to read on our Facebook page. She, as a parent, says, these kids are in harm's way. Why is no one supervising? Why are they cutting a tree branch overhead without any kind of eye protection? Why are they balanced on the arms of a lawn chair? And those are valid concerns. In the background of this photo, you see the city van. The mayor admits in an email, and she admits on a September City Council meeting, that she's sorry they used the city van, then she'll fill the tank. And that was wrong, she says. But the thing is, is more than that was wrong. She should not have had worked on her yard. And the thing is, the mayor lives on a very busy thorough street, and a lot of people saw kids in her yard working, and questions were raised. Not because of race, half my family is black. Half of everyone is here is a mixed race. We are not racist. And that race had nothing to do with it. Liability concerns and safety concerns. That is everything.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Is anyone else?
No, go ahead. Okay, I just wanted to end the comments on a good note. I'm Shawna Watts, Mark Watts's wife, and I am very proud of my husband. I'm very proud of what he's doing here in the community. And contrary to what some people might think that, you know, Boys to Men is here to not make an impact on the city, they are. And they've serviced a lot of our community members here, and especially the elderly, but they're open to anybody, right? Just wanted to end on a high note and say that we've been here for, what, fifteen years as a Lathrop Village resident? And for the most part, we've been quiet. So now that we're trying to do something positive into the community, I would hope that you guys welcome us and embrace us. And we're always available, so please just, you know, give us a call or stop by our booth when we're here at the different events. We're just here to help. Thank you.
Bob Barris. Uh, what I've seen, sitting over here, is a lot of white people stand up and deny that these black folks, my friends, uh, that they're not experiencing racism. I think it takes a lot of nerve to tell somebody that they don't, that they're not experiencing racism. And it, it kind of sickens me. And, and, uh, the Village Voice, I've seen yours, the stuff on your, on your, uh, website, and I've seen, uh, people calling the mayor a profiteer and saying that you're, that, that Mark's, uh, charity is just a money grab. And it's, and it's, some of that was by a man who ran for council. It's just ridiculous. Makes me angry.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there anyone else? Nobody?
So I think it's time for mayor and council, um, comment. And I, I have no idea of where to even start with this. So let's start here. And I'm gonna say this with all sincerity. There is no white person that can ever tell a black person what they experience in a day-to-day basis. Every single day that a black person goes out and something happens to them, we have to determine whether or not that is a racist issue. Were we discriminated against? Are we being treated unfairly? That's an everyday occurrence for a black person. I want you all to really understand that. Do you understand how it feels when you walk into a place and you look diff, you looked at differently because of the color of your skin? Do you understand what that means? Right? And so when I took office in 2017, I've lived in Southfield since nineteen seventy-three. Nineteen seventy-three. My parents never had their house egged. My parents never had their house spray painted. My parents weren't caught vicious names on any type of social media. Wasn't said that I was embezzling or, or laundry, money laundering. None of this happened. All this happened starting in 2017. What's the difference in 2017? Oh, you became a black mayor, the first black mayor. My house was egged. There's still proof there. I leave it there so I can remind myself of what I'm going to stand up for. I'm gonna stand up for you as a white woman. I'm gonna stand up for you as a black boy. I'm gonna stand up for you as a black man. But I leave it there because I'm for the people, by the people. And this is something that I deal with every day. We've already had this conversation. He's been discriminated against. We've had this, this discussion about being a Jewish man and what he has to go through. My house was spray painted. My safety was violated. And the reason why I went on Fox Two, because they came and asked me a question about what was going on with these boys. So let's go and let's talk about these boys being in my backyard. Number one, they were chased away from City Hall, from a city councilperson at that time. They were yelled at. They were, you know, and that's the part that we seem to keep forgetting about.
Why is there no?
They were, hey, excuse me, I'm still talking and the, the public comment is closed. So as I said, they were chased away from here. These boys come to our city so they have something to do in the summer to learn different skills that they can push them out into the world where they can be solid citizens. That's why they're here. And so when they're gonna be chased home and have nothing else to do, I did say, you know what? Send them over to my house. Now, sending them over to my house in a van, I did not think that they would do something like that and that was a failure on the person's part that sent them over to my house in the city van. Fun fact, I had just gotten my yard fixed. I had just gotten my yard cleaned. I have a six hundred dollar receipt to show you that I've already got that clean. I'm trying to figure out something for these boys to do so they don't have to go home and do nothing. You don't want them out in the street, right? You don't want them just to be sitting around not learning skills, right? You want them to learn something, right? The pictures that you all keep talking about cracks me up because here's the thing. The pictures that we're talking about are the pictures that you took in my backyard, not the pictures that were on Instagram. So no, excuse me, and I'm sorry that I'm doing the dialogue back and forth with you, but the pictures I'm talking about and have concerns about, somebody was hiding in my bush in my backyard and took pictures of these kids. And that is what was up here and presented, what you were talking about from, uh, Attorney Baker when you were saying it. So I mean, we can keep shaking our heads. I have the pictures at home and gladly will show them to you. So the point is, is that if someone, wrapping this up, and I'm sorry to have my own dialogue about it, but it is tiring. And I fully agree with Adam, who just said, how dare you tell a black person how they feel about racism? How dare you? You have no idea what that means. You have absolutely no idea. It's 2023 and we're still learning how to be the first of something. Black people are. This is, this is, this is so unacceptable for you to come here and then tell me what I feel about racism. Okay? And, okay? The thing is, yes, I do want the city to heal, but the one thing I'm not gonna do is I'm not gonna sweep it underneath the rug. We're gonna talk about it. If it's uncomfortable for you, then guess what? We're gonna have some uncomfortable conversations because this is something that I am going to live and die about and making sure that everyone has the equality that they deserve living in America. Period, as long as I am living.
Amen.
And so if you don't like it, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that you don't like it, but we live here together and we're going to, we're going to be together and we're gonna learn how to live together. You don't like the way that I do it? Hey, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna call you out. And I hope everybody else learns that too, that you do call people out. If you see something, then you say something. And the thing about it is implicit biases, I brought it to our training. I brought it to our training. I'm trying to get the training here to let you know what it means to have those type of implicit biases. And so in conclusion, is that yes, I will be putting something together. And yes, I do agree with Lauren Barris. There was an event here, law enforcement, and it was deep. Two, two people came to hear about it, just two. But the fact is, is that we'll have another one. And if I have to send an invitation personally to your houses for you to know exactly when it is, I will, because I really think that there is a time that we do need to heal. Just like what Charlotte said, it's a fact that God made all of us, regardless if you like it or not. And the same blood that runs through me runs through you. And so we can get along and we can talk and we can, and become neighborly. We can do this. But, but the thing about it is, all the extra stuff, I'm, we're done. Okay? So we're gonna have a little, we'll have a, uh, open house, a town hall to find out what is the issue. And then regarding my safety, when I open my window in the morning at eight o'clock on the nose and I see a woman standing outside my window, that's a safety issue to me.
Thank you. Anyone else has anything else to say?
Me?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, wanted to say that I feel deeply that I cannot possibly understand what another person's experience is, especially when it comes to something like racism. Uh, and especially if they don't say something about it. So you have to call attention to it when you are feeling that. Otherwise, how could any of us who are not that person possibly know that they're feeling that way? So I, I applaud the mayor and other people who have stood up, Mr. Watts, for saying, I feel this way, because that's their actual experience. And no amount of head shakes, smirks, eye rolls, laughter, grinning, or commentary under their breath is going to make that change. The only thing that's gonna make that change is people coming together to try and talk through and work through these things. And as Sue and Roger Lynn said, like, they've been living here a very long time and they have no sense that the city is a racist city. So there's an example that they, of their experience that it's truth for them. That's not the truth for other people that live in the city. But I can tell, because they're, what they said, that they want to be part of a solution to finding a solution to the issue of why do some people feel like they are being treated in, in completely inappropriate way? Uh, so I, I, I suspect and I, I'm confident that that will happen. We will have these meetings, we'll have these discussions and we will work through it. We have to do it in a responsible and non-demeaning way. We have to treat each other, as Dalton said in the study session, it was referenced in commentary earlier in this meeting, with grace and not with accusations or coming into conversations with assumptions of mistrust. Because if you come into a conversation with, into somebody and if you continue to make fun of what people say and think it's funny, then that's not going to be a path towards trying to find conclusions to these things, to try and heal wounds. If you actually want to be part of the problem, you gotta stop accusing people of things and making statements like questioning, making statements, stating questions that you already assume you have the facts for, but are just trying to get other people to see, see that question as the truth. Instead, come into conversations with facts. Come into conversations with open hearts. Come into conversations without accusations and preconceived notions. There is some concern I heard during public commentary that, uh, this, this news story on Fox Two is going to make it so people and businesses do not want to move here. I just want to point out, three new businesses have moved in and opened up in the last couple of months. And there's a new one about to open directly across the street that we had a special land use discussion about and a, a point, a approval of today. So I don't see the evidence that people aren't coming here and don't want to be part of the city. I think people want to be part of it. And anything we can do to try and heal these wounds will continue to cause that to blossom and to allow the city to continue to grow and be the wonderful place that we all know it is. And we want the rest of the world to know it is too.
Thank you.
Well, we have that web designer. I am very happy to see so many residents and people coming out to study sessions. I am a little sad at the reasoning. I feel that if we had this much community involvement at every meeting, uh, we wouldn't have to guess so much as couns, as, from council's point of view, what our citizens want. I know people have made some very strong statements, uh, some of the citizens, and I commend you guys for staying, um, to hear our response. I think it would be childish to say what you want and then leave, so I commend you guys for staying. I am thirty-one. I'm raising a two-year-old and I, it's unfortunate for me to see a lot of adults older than me and more seasoned that have lived life act the way that some of you have. We want to talk about coming together, but there are some people who, other people are talking and you can see faces, you can hear snickerings, you can hear laughter. And that's very disrespectful. I would, you know, I have a two-year-old. I don't teach her, we, we teach her not to talk when other people are talking. We teach her to try to be respectful. In reference to the Fox News airing, uh, a resident emailed me and we talked about it because she was upset, they were upset that our mayor called our city a racist city. So I rewatched it because the first time I watched it, I didn't hear her say that our city was racist, just that some racial things have happened to her. It might be a very slight, um, wording issue, but it says a lot. I think it would also say a lot that assuming she did say that the city was racist, that she still wants to live here and wants to serve her citizens. I think that says a lot, especially if we assume that she thinks the city is racist. It would make much more sense for her sanity and her health to just leave and go to a different city. Through all of that, I have one person email me, one citizen email me, to ask me, you know, she was up, they were upset that, um, their belief that the, the mayor called the city racist. But in the same email, they asked me, a black man, if I had ever experienced racism, which I, I thought, I feel that I have, um, but I thought it was very big of, of that citizen, not just to hear something that they don't agree with, but to also do a little bit of research. It is unfortunate that people can't trust the word. And I understand that there's more going on, more layers and, uh, that were built upon before I got here. But it's unfortunate to hear if someone does make a very strong accusation of something that they feel for people to not at least try to understand. It's a tough thing to understand, but the first, for the first reactions that I see are people making faces of disbelief, not even hearing what she said. I didn't hear not one person say anything about the fact that her house was egged and spray painted. I wasn't, I don't think I was around for that. No one seems to have an issue with that statement. But again, no one that has an issue with her feeling that racist things happen in the city has said anything about the things that she has said have happened to her. I just think, you know, we're adults, we, we have disagreements. I'm here to try to see how I can help the city. I heard maybe three citizens say anything about things that they want to see. Now granted, the, the video came out and that's understandable, but even still, when people talk and I'm watching you guys' opinions, people say things I don't agree with. I pray to God that I don't show it on my face because whether I agree with them or not, first and foremost, that's how they feel. And I feel as an elected official, it's my job to at least hear them out, to validate their feelings because ultimately I want us to work together. And I'm not gonna be able to do that if I'm not hearing people out who I agree or don't agree with. I just, I don't, I'm not sure how many people had a chance to sit in our study session, but I just want us to treat each other with grace. We disagree, I get an email from one or two citizens several times a week that I don't agree with, but I hear them out. I try to get them answers to their questions because ultimately that's what I think is best for the citizen. That's what I think is best for our community. I just want us to treat each other with grace if possible. I know there's a lot of things happening. I try myself not to dip into the racial aspect of it because I have a mixed family. And it's just unfortunate for me to want to raise my daughter here and to see one woman's opinions just kind of devalue without any sort of trying to understand what happened. It's tough for me to imagine something happened to my daughter and for people to not want to defend her or at least try to understand what happened before they have an opinion. I just ask that we try to treat each other like adults, since we are, and try to treat each other like humans. It's a difficult time, but we can be better. Thank you.
So I, I don't have much to add. I mean, I think you guys have pretty much said it all. I mean, the, the one thing I, I can just say is that it just, it just makes me really sad that we're dealing with this in 2024. The, the one, the only one thing that I, I do want to bring up is that, you know, a, a former councilperson in their comments, you know, said that, that racism in the city is, is, the word they used was unfounded, that the claims of racism in the, in the city was unfounded. And one of the things people have to realize is you don't always see it. It's not always reported. The victims don't, of racism don't always want to have it broadcast. Um, and what made me sad about that was that that person forgot about all the emails that we on council have received, uh, over the last two or three years. Some of them that are, are just heinous, um, and, and just racist to the core. So, you know, you, you don't want, you, you may, you don't see it all, uh, but it's, it's there and it, and it makes me sad. And like I said, hopefully we can, we can do something to bring the, bring the community together about that. Um, on other topics, Carol, you know, your, your, your questions about the, um, the, the community room, forward those dates onto Mike and we can look into it. Again, we, we, we don't deal with the day-to-day. And if there were, you know, uh, things that were done inappropriately, I mean, again, it was with past city administrators. I don't know that there's anything that we can do about it, but it would still be nice to know about it. So please forward that onto Mike and we can, we as a council or Mike as, as the administration can, can look into that. Ms. Miller, uh, I'm not gonna go back and forth with you. Um, you know, you accuse us of, of running the city into the ground financially. You constantly talk about the capital improvement bond and then all the infrastructure spending that we're doing. None of that affects, those are, those programs are all funded and none of those affect the general fund. It was pretty clear what was said in the, about the general fund today. Can you gavel them, please?
Yeah, I will.
Um, it was pretty clear and, and, and it's clear in the memo where, where our general fund is going. If you don't think we talked about the general fund, then you just were not listening.
Please still talking. Thank you.
Yes, the fund, the fund balance is exactly what we talked about today. Uh, then the nameplates was something that I brought up as well with, with, with Mike. Yeah, those, those were, those weren't, I thought, same thing that, that Ms. Miller thought, but they were for other, other printing things, other printing, uh, other printing services as well. But the one thing I did recommend is that we start looking, uh, for competitive bids or at least give them the opportunity to, uh, come down in, in, in price for some of the things that they charge us because they are very expensive. And the last thing I wanna say, because nobody has said it.
I know.
Um, because of the, you know, the other topics that are going on. Kelda, I'm really sorry to see you go. I love coming into the office and seeing your smile and talking to you about all the things that we talk about, uh, so you're gonna be missed, uh, and I wish you nothing but the best and I know we'll keep in touch, so I'm not worried about that. So, um, best of luck to you.
Sorry, Kelda, we all forgot about you. Thank you. Thank you for everything. You will be missed.
Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I will second.
We adjourn.